Okay, so let's move into our public hearing. For those of you who haven't joined us before, we'll give you just a brief explanation of how we conduct business. The city will call each case by the case number. If you're the appellant, we ask you to step forward to the podium. You'll state your name and your address, as well as sign in at the sign-in sheet that's at the podium. Also, if you could pull the microphone close to you, the sound in this room can be difficult and we can have trouble hearing you, and obviously it's very important that we can understand what you're asking for. And then we just ask you to explain to us what you are here for. What is your request? Why do you need your request? And just give us a little bit of a, you know, kind of summary of kind of what's going on and what you need. Then the city will read the findings of fact. We'll ask you to agree with those, or you can add anything at that time. Then we'll open it up to public hearing. If there's anybody from the public who wants to speak on that case, we'll open it up, allow them to step forward. And then we'll close it, and we, as the board, will deliberate. If you're the appellant, we ask you to stay in the front row so that we could ask you any questions, as a follow-up possibly. And hopefully, if you have any questions, you can certainly let us know when it's your opportunity. But with that, will the city call the first case, please?
For ZBA case 1914, the appellant Marcus Bradford, representing the owner Amelia Johnson, is requesting the following waiver from the board: to erect a fence beyond the side of the house along a double frontage yard; zero feet permitted; twenty-four point five feet proposed. The property is located on the south side of Los Palmas Street between San Carlos Street and Monterey Drive at 21425 Los Palmas Street, Sidwell Parcel 2415-129001, Zoned R2, Single Family Residential. This appeals to Section 5.371, Article 4, Paragraph C, Subsection 1D, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Hi, good evening.
Hi.
Hello.
If you could state your name and address for the record and pull the microphone down close to you, please. Thank you.
Marcus Bradford, 21425 Los Palmas.
Thank you.
Amelia Johnson Bradford, 21425 Los Palmas, Southfield, Michigan, 48076.
Thank you. Okay, if you'd like to give us just a brief summary of what you're asking for and why.
Well, I wanted to put a gate up and extend it from the back of the property to the house.
Pull the microphone closer to you again, thank you.
The back of the property to the house, to the side door from the garage, so I would be able to go in and out of the garage and still be in the backyard enclosed.
Okay. Okay, will the city read the findings of fact, please?
All right, findings of facts. Case number 19-14, the appellant Marcus Bradford, representing the owner Amelia Johnson, is requesting the following waiver from the board: to erect a fence beyond the side of the house along a double frontage yard; zero feet permitted; twenty-four point five inches proposed. The property is located on the south side of Los Palmas Street between San Carlos Street and Monterey Drive at 21425 Los Palmas Street, Sidwell Parcel Number 2415-129-001, Zoned R2, Single Family Residential. The property is north across, the property is north across Los Palmas Street, south, east, and west across San Carlos Street, our Zoned R2, Single Family Residential, and are developed with single-family homes, which are a mix of ranch and two-story construction in the Beverly Woods Subdivision Number 5, Mount Vernon Place and Mount Vernon Place Number 2 subdivision. The facade materials are a mix of brick and vinyl siding. The subject property is a two-story dwelling on a corner lot. The corner lot along San Carlos and Virginia Street exhibit fencing in the same location and proposed fence. The property to the south has a chain link fence in the side yard of the double frontage lot. The owner is proposing to install a six-foot privacy fence 24.5 feet and inches from the side of the garage along San Carlos Street. The fence would run from the rear property line to the midpoint on the garage along the property line to enclose the side door of the garage. The subject property has an in-ground pool with interior fence enclosing it. Construction has begun on the fence without permit or approval, and the posts are set. Defense ordinance required the fence on a double frontage lot to align with the side of the house and extend to the rear of the lot. The appellant is seeking a waiver of 24.5 feet beyond the side of the house to the rear yard; zero permitted, 24.5 proposed.
Okay, thank you. Do you agree with those facts?
Yes.
Okay, is there anything else you'd like to add at this time?
No.
Okay, so we'll let the city read the recommendation, and then we'll move to public comment, okay?
The staff recommendation is for favorable consideration of 24.5 feet beyond the side of the house to install the fence with the following conditions: the fence must comply with all other fence requirements; the fence can't project any further than the midpoint of the garage along San Carlos Street frontage. This recommendation is based upon the following: visibility will be maintained by the fence location, stopped at the midpoint on the garage; the purpose of the fence will, I mean, the proposed fence will be, will not be located in any corner clearance area.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this case? If so, you can step forward to the microphone, state your name and address. Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment and turn it over to the board. Ms. Lesny?
Yes, I'm curious, how long have you been living in the house? I don't care which one you live in. I'm sure you have the same answer.
Thirteen years? Twelve? Twelve.
Okay. Some of it looks, some of the fencing looks like it's, the wire, the chain link fence looks like it needs some repair. I didn't get out and actually rock the fence, but it looks like it needs some fixing up. As far as the addition that you want, I can understand why you want it. That happens to be a very busy corner. It's the way in, from 12 Mile into that whole subdivision, so you have a lot of people coming around, and I can understand why you don't want people looking into your backyard every time they come around your house. I agree with the findings of the city.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Friedman?
I have no issues with this.
Okay, Mr. Wygum?
I don't have a problem with it. My question is, is, do you know what kind of fence you're gonna put in?
Just a regular privacy stockade fence.
Is it gonna be a vinyl or wood?
Wood.
Good. I am a proponent of wood. Vinyl right across the street, that white shiny looks terrible to me, but that's my own personal opinion.
Mr. Rogers?
Quick question, the enclosure around the swimming pool, are you keeping that up?
Yes, I am.
You are? Okay. I don't have a problem with the additional fence. I think you kind of need it to do what you want to do, and all the other houses on corner lots in that area have the same feature, so I don't have a problem with it.
Okay, I agree. A couple of questions I had, and my colleagues answered, so, Mr. Rogers, will you make a motion for us?
In regards to case number 1914, the appellant Marcus Bradford, representing the owner Amelia Johnson, is requesting the following waiver from the board: to erect a fence beyond the side of the house along a double frontage yard; zero feet permitted; twenty-four and a half feet proposed, or twenty-four or five inches proposed. Property is located on the south side of Los Palmas Street between San Carlos Street and Monterey Drive. 21425 Los Palmas Street is the address. I move to make a motion to approve this waiver of 24 and a half feet beyond the side of the house to install this fence with the following conditions: the fence must comply with all the other fence requirements, and the fence cannot project any further than the midpoint of the garage along the San Carlos Street frontage. I make this motion based upon the following: one, the visibility will be maintained by the fence's location stopping at the midpoint on the garage, and the proposed fence will not be located in any corner clearance area.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a second?
I'll have a second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations. Enjoy your fence, your private backyard.
Thank you.
Thank you. Will the city call the next case, please?
For ZBA case 1919, the appellant Larry Femster is requesting the following waiver from the board: to erect a fence beyond the side of a house along a double frontage yard; zero feet permitted; eighteen feet proposed. The property is located on the south side of Crescent Drive between Southfield Road and Greenfield Road at 16389 Crescent Drive, Sidwell Parcel 2412-402001, Zoned R4, Single Family Residential. This appeal is to Section 5.371, Article 4, Paragraph C, Subsection 1D, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance.
Thank you. Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
If you could give us your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Larry Femster, 16389 Crescent Drive.
Okay, thank you.
Debra Femster, 16389 Crescent Drive.
Great, thank you. If you could just give us an explanation of what you're asking for and why.
What I'm asking for is to extend the fence eighteen feet past the corner of the house. The reason being, there's multiple reasons. One, my doggies, so I can let them out the side of the house so they can have, roam the yard. Second reason is for our safety. If you guys had an opportunity to drive, since Pierce and Crescent is a very, very busy intersection, a lot of traffic, a lot of pedestrian traffic, a lot of bicycle traffic, a lot of automobile traffic, and from, as you're approaching our home, you can look right through the back door. This home was previously owned by my brother. We purchased it from him about four months ago, five months ago. Been a resident of Southfield for 26 years, so we downsized a little bit by getting this home. And we're just trying to get a little security. Plus, on the opposite side, we only have like seven feet on our property line, and our neighbor has a pit bull mix, and my wife is terrified. We don't want to use that side of the house, so we're asking that we are allowed to extend that fence so we can have a gate, so we can enter and exit from the gate on that side of the home.
Okay, sounds good. Will the city read the findings of fact, please?
Findings of facts, case number 19-19, the appellant Larry Femster is requesting the following waiver from the board: to erect a fence beyond the side of the house along a double frontage yard; zero feet permitted; eighteen feet proposed. The property is located on the south side of Crescent Drive between Southfield Road and Greenfield Road at 16389 Crescent Drive, Sidwell Parcel 2412-402001, Zoned R4, Single Family Residential. The properties to the north across Crescent, south, east, and west across Pierce are Zoned R4, Single Family Residential, and developed with single-family homes, which are ranch and two-story construction in Bedford Villa Subdivision Number 3 and 4. The facade material are a mix of brick and vinyl siding. The subject property is a two-story dwelling on the corner lot. Corner lots along Pierce, along Pierce Street exhibit fencing in the same location as the proposed fence. The property to the west across Pierce has a six-foot wood privacy fence along the Pierce Street right-of-way. The owner is proposing to install a six-feet stone, stolen pattern privacy fence ten feet from property line along Pierce. The fence will run from the rear property line to the midpoint on the garage along the property line to enclose the side door to the rear. The subject property has an existing vinyl fence used as a screen wall along the side of the house. Defense ordinance require a fence on a double frontage lot to align with the side of the house and extend to the rear of the lot. The appellant is seeking a waiver of eighteen feet beyond the side of the house to the rear yard; zero feet permitted; eighteen feet proposed.
Great, thank you. Do you agree with those facts?
Yes.
Okay, anything else you'd like to add at this time?
No, not at this time.
Okay, sounds good. Will the city read the staff recommendation, please?
Staff recommendation is for favorable consideration of eighteen feet beyond the side of the house to install the fence with the following considerations: the fence must comply with all other fence requirements; the fence cannot project any further than the midpoint of the garage along Pierce Street frontage. The recommendation is based upon the following: visibility will be maintained by the fence location, stopping at midpoint to the garage. The proposed fence will not be located in any corner clearance area.
Great, thank you. Anything else you want to add, or we can open it up to public comment and then turn it over to the board?
Open up for public comment.
Okay, sounds good. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this case? If so, please step forward to the podium. Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment. We'll turn it over to the board. Mr. Wygum?
I have no problem with this. I go along with the city.
All right, thank you. Mr. Rogers?
I had no problem with it. The design of the fence is real, real nice, too, so.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Lesny?
Yeah, I have no problem with it, but I do have a question. You're not doing anything with the back, the back fence? It looks like, I guess it belongs to your neighbor's apartment.
That's the neighbor fence, and unfortunately, the neighbor passed away about a year and a half ago, and that home's in probate.
Oh, 'cause I didn't know, 'cause you were concerned about security, and that one looks like it's not so secure.
Yeah. Well, I'm gonna ask her, her children if we can take it down, 'cause it, it'll be an eyesore once we get the fence up, so.
Okay, but you're not gonna put another fence in parallel to that?
If they don't agree, then we'll, yes, but if they let us take it down, we'll just take it down.
No, she's saying if we're gonna put a fence.
Oh, yes, the fence is gonna, oh, absolutely. Absolutely, it's gonna go across, parallel with it, yes, I'm sorry.
Okay. I have no problem with this.
I have no, no problem with this, it is a recommendation. When I went by your house, there was a cop sitting on the, right across the street. And I was like, I was surprised that they would need a cop, that it's so busy that they would need a cop there, but it, you know.
They're always there.
It seemed like you'd want a fence there, so I approve.
Sounds good. I agree as well. I think the fence looks very cool. I don't think we've actually been, we haven't seen a fence proposed like that, so it looks very nice. I'm excited to drive by once it's up and see what it looks like, so. Ms. Lesny, will you make a motion for me?
Sure. Regarding case 1919, the appellant Larry Femster is requesting to erect a fence beyond the side of the house along the double frontage yard; zero feet permitted; eighteen feet proposed to the property located on the south side of Crescent Drive between Southfield Road and Greenfield Road, 16389 Crescent Drive, Sidwell Parcel, excuse me, 2412-402001, Zoned R4, Single Family Residential. I move that we grant this request, the condition being that the fence must comply with all other fence requirements, and the fence cannot project any further than the midpoint of the garage along the Pierce Street frontage. This grant is based on the following: that the visibility will be maintained by the fence location, stopping at the midpoint on the garage, and the proposed fence will not be located in any corner clearance area.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate you.
Good evening.
All right, will the city call the next case, please?
For ZBA case 1918, the appellant Sign Graphics Incorporated, representing the owner, Charter Development Company LLC, is requesting the following waiver from the board for an electronic ground sign in the corner clearance area. Property is located on the east side of Loser Road between Nine Mile and Ten Mile Roads at 24590 Loser Road, Sidwell Parcel 2427-101051, Zoned OS Office Service. This appeals to Section 8.36, Article 3, Chapter 99 of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the sign ordinance.
Hi, good evening.
Hi, Mike Tisma, 5215 Flyby Drive, Caledonia, Michigan, 49316. We're requesting a replacement monument sign to be put in the same location as the existing monument sign, approximately 30 square feet, six foot tall. The only difference between the new sign versus the old sign, the new sign just has new branding and colors, and also a monochrome LED message center instead of the manual changeable copy on the existing sign. And this, the variance is to be, the request is to put it inside the 25-foot by 25-foot clear vision triangle because of the visibility for traffic, and that's where the current sign is. And also, I believe, I don't have the documentation, but I believe there was a variance granted for the existing sign that's currently in place, possibly for the same reason. Not 100% sure on that, maybe you guys know that.
Okay, will the city read that? Do you have something to add?
Yes, if I might, through the chair, to the appellant, you're with Sign Graphics, correct?
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that got on the record, because you didn't say it, so.
Yes, sorry about that.
Just make sure that's, not a problem. Findings of fact for ZBA 1918, the appellant Sign Graphics Incorporated, representing the owner, Charter Development Company LLC, is requesting the following waiver from the board for an electronic ground sign in the corner clearance area. Property is located on the east side of Loser Road between Nine and Ten Mile Roads at 24590 Loser Road, Sidwell Parcel 2427-101051, Zoned OS Office Service. The properties to the north and south, directly abutting, the subject property, are Zoned OS Office Service. The structure to the north is a single-story office building, and to the south, the property is developed with the Marthoma Church. To the east, the property is a Zoned R2, Single Family Residential, and are developed with single-family dwellings along Lois Lane, which are separated by a six-foot tall fence and wall. To the west, across Loser Road, the property is Zoned RE, Single Family Residential, and is developed with the Southfield High School. Subject property has one entrance exit along Loser Road, which leads to the parking and driveway areas to the rear. Locating the entrance along the Loser Road frontage is difficult due to the extensive landscaping and the amount of traffic entering the site. A survey of signage reveals one illuminated changeable copy garden ground sign, 30 square feet in area, five feet in height, in a corner clearance area. There are no other wall or ground signs at the site. The sign was granted in zoning board of appeals case 0493. In the OS Office Service Zone, the site would be permitted one garden ground sign or ground support sign with a maximum area of 35 square feet, at a minimum of two foot setback from the property line, not located in any corner clearance area. In addition, one wall sign is permitted for the development, and the signage must face a major thoroughfare. In Section 8.50A, electronic changeable copy, this site would be permitted one electronic changeable copy sign, which meets the size, height, and setback requirements of the OS Office Service Zone. The sign must be of a single LED color, monochrome, either amber or red colors only. All other requirements for the electronic copy sign must be followed. The appellant is proposing to install the following: one illuminated garden ground sign with electronic changeable copy section, 31.25 square feet in area, five feet in height at the required setback in the corner clearance area to the north of the entrance exit to the site.
All right, thank you. If you could step back up for us. Do you agree with those facts?
I do.
Okay, is there anything else you'd like to add at this point?
Not at this time.
Okay, will the city read the recommendation, please?
Staff's recommendation is for the approval of the waiver for an electronic garden ground sign located in the corner clearance area, and to rescind previous ZBA case 0493 with the following conditions: the owner agreed to eliminate any prohibited sign types such as banners, balloons, balloon structures, portable signs of any type, vehicles or persons displaying signs visible to the right-of-way or flags other than country or state designations as required by ordinance. The signage must be installed as presented, signed and dated as an exhibit for this case, and any changes other than face changes must be brought back to this board for approval. The appellant must provide a landscape plan for the area surrounding the ground supports, the ground, garden ground sign, for approval by the planning department as required by ordinance, and the electronic sign must meet all other requirements of Section 8.50A. This recommendation is based on the following: the proposed garden ground sign would be permitted by ordinance if not located in a corner clearance area. The location of the garden ground sign while in the corner clearance area should still provide visibility for vehicles exiting the site, and rescinding the previous ZBA case will improve the variance record for 24590 Loser Road.
Okay, thank you. Anything else you'd like to?
One quick question. Is there, is there requirements for that landscape plan as far as plants and so on in your ordinance?
If I might, through the chair, to the appellant, no, we just request a drawing of it that gets sent to our landscape designer, and then she'll work with you to make sure the plants. We really don't have specific plants or things like that within the ordinance, it's just the approval of the planning department.
Okay, it does require plants, though it cannot just be just wood chips or stone around.
Correct, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I will open it up to public comment. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this case? So, just step forward to the podium. If not, we will close public comment and turn it over to the board. Mr. Wygum?
No, I don't, I don't have a problem with this. It is difficult to see the sign right now. And you got lots of kids coming and going on the other side of the street, as I know, and you got the church on the other side. I don't have a problem with this, go along with the city.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rogers?
I don't have a problem either. I did have a question, though, regarding the address of the building. I didn't see it.
I didn't see it either.
What's that?
The actual address? Now, if I might, through the chair, to the appellant, the address, I think there's a skirt on the bottom of the sign, am I correct?
There is.
It would just be a suggestion from staff that may be just the address, doesn't have to say Loser Road, would be put on the skirt. Could that be possible?
Absolutely.
It's up to the board whether they put that on as a condition or not, but it would be a suggestion.
It is in the drawing of this sign. It's not currently on the building, I think, is what Mr. Rogers pointed.
That's what my thing is. I just want to make sure that the address is on the new sign, that that's, it's, it's hard to discern the address of that building.
Yeah, they actually have to.
You'd have to go around the back to figure it out.
They actually do have to have an address visible to the public way, so I'll make sure we circle around with that through the code enforcement department. They have to.
Yeah, that was my only, only view.
It's here.
On the building itself. It's, it's a requirement of the code.
Ms. Lesny?
I have no problems with it. I just, I sort of, I have nothing with the sign. I think it's fine and to put it. I just wish you made your entrance a little bit wider, so if there's one car blocking anything, it doesn't block 15 cars and the traffic light on Loser, but if there's one car backing, there's no place anybody else can go. I don't know, this is not for this, but I would hope that the people in the, that use the facility or in charge of the facility could figure out some way where more cars could get into the property and then flow towards the pickup area, because it was backed up quite heavily along Loser, and for three lights, everybody just sat there, 'cause there was a car just sitting in the middle, and it couldn't get into the lot. So, I would hope that you would try to address that issue somewhat by widening that area. Other than that, the, the sign is fine, and of course, it has to be in a corner clearance area, there's no other place to put it.
Mr. Friedman?
I don't have any, any issues with the sign. I, you know, I, I also had a hard time finding which building we were talking about, the address wasn't on there. You know, and I have no issues going along with the city on this.
Okay, sounds good. I don't have any questions either. I think the sign will be a nice upgrade, and, you know, I'm, these are kind of the new standard here, these changeable signs, or electronic signs. So, Mr. Wygum, will you make a motion?
Sure. In regard, case 1918, regard to the appellant Sign Graphics Incorporated, representing the owner, Charter Development Company LLC, requesting the following waivers from the board: an electronic ground sign in the corner clearance area. The property is located on the east side of Loser Road between West Nine Mile Road and West Ten Mile Road at 21425 Los Palmas Street. and West Ten Mile Road at two-four-five-nine-zero Loser Road. Um, I move that we grant this waiver, uh, for an electric garden ground sign located in the corner clearance area, and to rescind previous ZBA case number zero-four-dash-ninety-three. Uh, and these are the following conditions: That, uh, the owner agreed to eliminate any prohibited sign types such as banners, balloons, balloon structures, portable signs of any type, vehicles or persons displaying the signs visible to the right-of-way, or flags other than a country or state designation as required by ordinance. Uh, the signage must be installed as presented, signed and dated as exhibits for this case, and any changes other than the face changes must be brought back to this board for approval. Um, and that the, the, the number of the property be put on the sign. Uh, the appellant must provide a landscape plan for the area surrounding the ground support sign for approval by the planning department as required by ordinance. The electronic sign must meet all requirements of section eight point five-zero-A. This is based on the, on the following: That the proposed garden's ground sign would be permitted by ordinance if not located in the corner clearance area. The location of the garden ground sign while in the corner clearance area should still be, should still provide visibility for the vehicles exiting the site. Rescinding the previous ZBA case will improve the variance record for twenty-four-five-nine-zero Loser Road.
All right, thank you. Can I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so just make sure you get that landscaping plan. And, all right, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is approval of minutes from our last meeting, August twentieth. Uh, anyone have any changes?
I don't.
I didn't see anything.
Nope.
Man, it was perfect.
Oh, outstanding. Uh, can I have a motion to approve the minutes for August twentieth?
I shall move.
Can I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, discussion of our next meeting on September seventeenth?
Yes, we have one sign and one commercial case, uh, for the September seventeenth meeting. In addition, just wanted to remind everybody, we only have one meeting in October, so.
Okay, sounds good. Any miscellaneous from anyone?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
It's my pet peeve, and I brought it up before. I would like, uh, that in the, when you're talking about the case, when you're, name the case up here, if it has a name on the building, like Loris Academy or something, that it's put there. All you have to do is put it in parentheses.
Okay.
It would, you know, right, it's there, when I go through here, I find it, but, but it would be nice to just have it right out front.
Not a problem.
That's all.
Okay. Uh, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.